Chamber, if you'd like to join me in prayer. Father God, Maker of heaven and earth, I just want to thank you for all that is good. In a time in our country where there's conflict, and yet tonight, we have new beginnings here. I pray for that we can find unity and reconciliation and compassion for one another. I pray, Lord, for those that have experienced racism, that you will bring them healing. I pray for our police officers, who act with honor and duty, that you will give them wisdom and keep them safe. Lord, I pray for those that experienced COVID-19, and for the families of those who have lost people that they love. Lord, I also just thank you for the leaders of our country, our state, and our city. And, Lord, I thank you especially for our mayor, our city council, that has served in leaving us, Lord, and for the new council, but also for the staff here. It takes real courage to lead, and I am so privileged to live in the city of Independence. Thank you so much for all that you are going to do, and, Lord, I invite you tonight into this meeting. And all the people say amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmembers Huff?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
Doherty?
Here.
DeLucy?
Here.
Robertson?
Here.
Van Camp?
Here.
Mayor Weir?
Here. Madam State Clerk, will there be any citizens who signed up to speak this evening?
There are no citizens who signed up in advance.
Are there any citizens present who would like to address the council this evening? Okay, thank you very much. This takes us to our consent agenda, Mayor Pro Tem.
Madam Mayor, I recommend the recommendations of the City Manager, Viva.
Are there any items any council member wishes to pull for separate consideration? Jerry Young, Madam State Clerk, please call the roll on the consent agenda.
Did we get a second on that?
Second.
I'm sorry. It's...
I'll second it.
It is moved to seconded. There are no items any council member wishes to pull for separate consideration. Madam State Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Doherty?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. This raises our second reading. Madam State Clerk.
Bill number 20-041, An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 19084, Finding, Determining, and Declaring the Necessity of Acquiring Additional General Utility Easements and Temporary Construction and Grading Easements for the Walnut Garden Stormwater Improvement Project in the Crackerneck Watershed, Number 70131809, Authorizing the Negotiation and Eminent Domain Proceedings if Necessary, Approving the Plans and Specifications for the Project, Authorizing the Use of Experts as Needed, Authorizing and Directing the Execution of Documents, and the Payment of Funds to Property Owners or Others Holding Property Rights in Conjunction with the Project. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Jerry Young, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Doherty?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Order is passed.
Bill number 20-042, An Ordinance Authorizing Acceptance of the 2020 Midwest High-Intensity Drug Trafficking Area HIDA Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, for the Investigative Support Center Initiative and Related Documents with the Kansas Bureau of Investigation for a Grant Award in the Amount of $143,579.54, Making the Necessary Appropriations, Authorizing Future Change Orders for Additional Funding and/or Time Extensions, and Authorizing Certain Future Appropriations. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Jerry Young, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Doherty?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Order is passed.
Bill number 20-043, An Ordinance Authorizing Acceptance of the 2020 Midwest High-Intensity Drug Trafficking Area HIDA Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, for the Kansas City Overland Park DEA Task Force Initiative and Related Documents with the Kansas Bureau of Investigation for a Grant Award in the Amount of $153,166, Making the Necessary Appropriations, Authorizing Future Change Orders for Additional Funding and/or Time Extensions, and Authorizing Certain Future Appropriations. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Jerry Young, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Doherty?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Order is passed.
Bill number 20-044, An Ordinance Adopting the Annual Operating and Capital Budgets of the City of Independence, Missouri for the Fiscal Year July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021, Estimating the Revenues for Said Fiscal Year, Appropriating Sums for the Purposes Stated in Said Budget, Establishing Operating Transfers, Designating Fund Balance allocations, Establishing the Authorized Table of Organization, and Designating Those Who May Take a Requisition for Incumbrances Against Appropriations. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, councilmember.
Mr. City Manager, at the end of Section 6, I think there's simply a typographical error, where we have Animal Services Fund appropriation. I believe that's where you meant to also say Health/Animal Services Fund, and then take out the word Health from Parks Health and Recreation Fund. I could be wrong, but I think that's what we were aiming for.
Right, this is the old Health and Recreation Levy that has been previously deposited as a general fund revenue and that we're splitting, and the title that you referenced would be more helpful and more appropriate. I did talk with our staff, and we can make that change administratively to reflect that, so you don't have to worry about amending the budget or anything like that tonight, but we can make that suggestion so that it does say Health/Animal Services and then the Parks and Recreation, two separate funds.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. City Manager, according to the charter, we have to have a balanced budget, and I know we're short on about $2 million. I realize that we really don't know where our revenues are going to come from daily. I was just, for information, I was just wondering if this new council coming in remembers if there's going to be some kind of a quarterly or something to enlighten them a little bit what's going on here.
Yes, correct. So, the budget that we're presenting you tonight, at least on paper, is balanced, but as you say, throughout the year, those revenues ebb and flow, and expenses ebb and flow. So, through the Audit and Finance Committee, we'll be presenting monthly. That committee's to be meeting monthly, and we're going to present to them and make adjustments as needed throughout the fiscal year. Next Monday night, on our study session, I'm going to provide some revised numbers based on some of the data that we've gotten, but, yeah, that's a good point and one that we'll work with on the council throughout each month-to-month over the next 12 months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this bill? Jerry Young, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Doherty?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Order is passed. That concludes our regular agenda for this evening. I would ask that we suspend the rule, rules of order, to allow our outgoing council members a moment to make some remarks. Is there any objection to this, that studying the rules of order? Okay, then I will begin on my left with Councilman Robertson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just thought I would share this with the folks out there. I'm going to just set it right up there. At our executive session earlier, the mayor presented those to us going off the council, and I appreciate that very much. It's a nice remembrance of the time that I've spent. I just wanted to share a few remarks that I had prepared for this evening, and I want to begin by saying thanks to all those that supported me through two elections over the last six years. I'm grateful for the trust that you placed in me. I feel like I've done my best, or at least I've tried to do my best, to represent you by making decisions and comments and votes that I felt was for the good of the whole of Independence. I've not been able to see all the changes needed that I had hoped, but disappointments are part of life. Each of us is serving you on this council. Each of us on this council are only sitting here in these roles for a short period of time, and it's important, I think, to realize that we are not here for ourselves, but for the common good, and that the decisions that we make and have made affect both the present and the future lives and the future of Independence. I feel this responsibility should weigh heavily on each member of the council as they use wisdom and guidance from experts to formulate policy. This realization keeps us centered on the good of others and not ourselves. An example of this comes from a story I read by a rabbi that carried two slips of paper, one in each pocket. On one, he wrote, "For my sake, the world was created," and on the other, he wrote, "I am but dust and ashes." The rabbi would take out each slip of paper as necessary as a reminder to himself. The balance of ego is a huge challenge for us as humans, and especially for someone who lives in the public spheres we do. This quote reminds me that to live in tension is a natural state, and to always be both humble and simultaneously believe in the infinite power of God placed in each of our souls and the power to change the world. I will still live here in Independence, and I will continue to help and assist as I can. As I started my time on the council six years ago, I had no grandchildren, and as of last month, we had our sixth grandchild. So, I look forward to making some wonderful memories with all of them. We are living in unprecedented times with both the COVID-19 and now many of the riots that have occurred. I think it's even more important to remember the two great commandments, love God and love your neighbor as yourself. If we can remember to focus on those two things, I think all of our problems and solutions will come into focus. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Councilman. I'll go to my right, and have a turn.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. I've enjoyed the eight years I've spent up here. It doesn't seem like anywhere I go, I can't see a wonderful improvement, new buildings, new repairs, some things you don't get to see, they're in the ground, but that's always enjoyable to have that. We've got several real nice projects that are started this year yet. It'll be nice to see them getting done and getting finished. Some will probably start the first year or so. Anywhere we go, we see a lot of nice improvements, and it makes you feel good that you've left it a little bit better. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Van Camp?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the time I've served. I want to thank the citizens of the 4th District and the city, and I leave you with the quotes of General MacArthur. Take your pick. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you all for your service to our city. It takes a lot of dedication and courage to do these jobs, so thank you very much. We will take a short recess, and then we will proceed with the installation ceremony
Okay, I'll call the meeting back to order and proceed with our installation ceremony. You're back up here. Okay. Thank you all for being here for this very special occasion. We will begin with the invocation, which will be offered by Wayne Nelson, Lead Chaplain of Independence Police Department. If you would please stand for the invocation, then we will follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Scouts James Buehler and Drake Ogle, Troop 282.
Let's pray together. Lord God, sometimes when we come before you, we just need to stop and take a breath and sense your presence and your goodness in our lives. We are so grateful for the many, many hours that are put into leading our city, for those that have been doing it for a number of years, for these that have just stepped off. We give you thanks. And now, Lord, we turn our attention to those that will be making up our new council, mindful of how when there was a change of leadership in the Old Testament from King David to his son Solomon. Lord, your word says that Solomon could have asked for anything, and the two things that he asked for were wisdom and knowledge. It is my prayer that for this incoming council, for the entire leadership, that both wisdom and knowledge would be evident, knowledge to know and to learn and to grow, and wisdom in terms of how to use that knowledge. So, Lord, humbly, we offer ourselves to you each and every day, and we invite you to speak into our hearts and lives. Thank you. Give us strength, not only wisdom, but a strength and a guidance that comes directly from you. In the name of God Almighty, we pray. Amen.
Please face the flag. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam State Clerk, will you please call the roll? Councilmembers Huff?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
DeLucy?
Here.
Mayor Weir? Here. Madam State Clerk, will you please call forward the council members to administer the oath of office? Yes. First, we'll start with District 1, Councilmember John Perkins. If anybody here is wanting to take photographs, you may do that during the oath of office.
I, John Perkins.
Having been elected to the office of District 1?
Have you been elected to the office of District 1?
Within and for the City of Independence?
Within and for the City of Independence.
In the County of Jackson, State of Missouri?
In the County of Jackson, State of Missouri.
Do you solemnly swear that I possess all the qualifications prescribed for said office?
Do solemnly swear that I possess all the qualifications prescribed for said office?
By the Charter of the City of Independence?
By the Charter of the City of Independence.
I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Missouri?
And of the State of Missouri.
And all provisions of the Charter and ordinances of said city?
And all provisions of the Charter and ordinance of said city.
And will faithfully demean myself in said office?
And will faithfully demean myself in said office?
That I was not at any time in my said election?
That I was not at any time of my said election?
In arrears to said city?
In arrears to said city.
For any tax?
For any tax?
Lean?
Lean?
Forfeiture?
Forfeiture?
For defalcation?
I, Bryce Stewart.
Having been elected to the office of District 2?
Having been elected to the office of District 2?
With and for the City of Independence?
With and for the City of Independence.
In the County of Jackson, State of Missouri?
In the County of Jackson, State of Missouri.
Do you solemnly swear that I possess?
Do solemnly swear that I possess?
All the qualifications prescribed for said office?
All the qualifications prescribed for said office?
By the Charter of the City of Independence?
By the Charter of the City of Independence.
I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Missouri?
And of the State of Missouri.
And all provisions of the Charter?
And the provisions of the Charter.
And ordinances of said city?
And ordinances of said city.
And will faithfully demean myself in said office?
Will faithfully demean myself in said office?
That I was not at the time of my said election?
That I was not at the time of my said election?
In arrears to said city?
In arrears to said city?
For any tax?
For any tax?
Lean?
Lean?
Forfeiture?
Forfeiture?
For defalcation in office? And next, we'll be District 3, Mike Steinmeier.
I'm Mike Steinmeier. Having been elected? Having been elected?
To the office of District 3?
To the office of District 3.
Within and for the City of Independence?
Within and for the City of Independence.
In the County of Jackson?
In the County of Jackson.
State of Missouri?
State of Missouri.
Do solemnly swear that I possess?
Do solemnly swear that I possess?
All the qualifications prescribed for said office?
All the qualifications prescribed for said office.
By the Charter of the City of Independence?
By the Charter of the City of Independence.
I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Missouri?
And of the State of Missouri.
And all provisions of the Charter?
And all provisions of the Charter.
And ordinances of said city?
And ordinances of said city.
And will faithfully demean myself in said office?
And will faithfully demean myself in said office.
That I was not at the time of my said election?
And that I was not at the time of my said office, or election?
In arrears to said city?
In arrears to said city.
For any tax?
For any tax?
Lean?
Lean?
Forfeiture?
Forfeiture?
For defalcation? And finally, we have 4th District, Daniel Hobart.
No, I need one. Thank you.
I, Daniel Hobart.
I, Daniel Hobart.
Having been elected?
Having been elected?
To the office of District 4?
To the office of District 4.
Within and for the City of Independence?
Within and for the City of Independence.
In the County of Jackson?
In the County of Jackson.
State of Missouri?
State of Missouri.
Do solemnly swear that I possess?
Do solemnly swear that I possess?
All the qualifications prescribed for said office?
All the qualifications prescribed for said office.
By the Charter of the City of Independence?
By the Charter of the City of Independence.
I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Missouri?
And of the State of Missouri.
And all provisions of the Charter?
And all provisions of the Charter.
And ordinances of said city?
And ordinances of said city.
And will faithfully demean myself in said office?
And will faithfully demean myself in said office?
That I was not at the time of my said election?
That I was not at the time of my said election?
In arrears to said city?
In arrears to said city?
For any tax?
For any tax?
Lean?
Lean?
Forfeiture?
Forfeiture?
For defalcation in office?
Madam State Clerk, will you please call the roll? Councilmembers Huff?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
DeLucy?
Here.
Steinmeier?
Here.
Hobart?
Here.
Mayor Weir? Here. Sorry, I got to go back to the agenda. Our regular business proceedings will begin with calling for nominations for the position of Mayor Pro Tem. Are there any nominations for Mayor Pro Tem?
Madam Mayor, I have a nomination.
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Councilwoman Mike for Mayor Pro Tem.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to nominate Councilmember-at-large, Mike Cuff. Are there any other nominations for Mayor Pro Tem? Hearing none. Madam State Clerk, will you please call the roll on the nomination for Mike Cuff for Mayor Pro Tem? Councilmembers Huff?